Go red. Just give me the heads up when you're ready. Well, welcome. I'd like to call this first city council meeting to order and let's go ahead and start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Val, could you go ahead and read our roll, please?
Yes. Mayor Bagley?
Here.
Council members Christensen?
Here.
Finley? Martin?
Here.
Peck? Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Bagley, we have a quorum.
Thank you, and Councilmember Finley is excused. She's on a plane apparently heading to Washington DC for National League of Cities. Is that what it is?
Charlotte.
Charlotte? Charlotte it is, but she's on city business, we thank her, and happy travels, Mayor Protem. So at this time, we're going to go ahead and have first call, public invited to be heard. Sorry, what are we doing? I don't think we, no, we do, uh... I think we do, uh...I think we do. Let me consult my mayor pro tem.
We approved my last.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're all right, yeah. All right, so, but thank you. Better, better to be, yes, thank you. We don't have any public invited to be heard? All right, so let's, all right, well, let's go ahead, all right, well, what we're going to do, what we're going to do, let's just go ahead, I'll read that after our special presentations. I don't see special presentations on the agenda, but, there we are, Longmont Economic Development Partnership. See, it's not the agenda agenda, this is a cheat agenda. All right, let's go ahead and have special reports and presentations. Yes, Mayor Protem? Councilmember, Mayor Protem Christensen?
I would like to, I'd like point of information, do we have on the agenda for the 28th consideration of when the special election for will be? Okay, all right, thank you.
So I guess my question is, Val, just a quick question. So six, so we, so we're not following the agenda tonight? Right now, what I'm saying is, so I thought we were going to go, public invited to be heard, I'm sorry, agenda revisions, city managers' reports, then special reports and presentations. That's what we're going to do? All right, Val, thanks. So, scratch the special reports, let's go ahead, actually, let me start with the agenda revisions and submission of documents and motions to direct the city manager to add agenda items to future agendas. So, mayor has a little bit of prerogative to augment the agenda, and so there were four things that I just want to inform council that I think we should discuss at some point over the next couple of weeks or months. One, there is a prairie dog loophole, and the question is, do we close it or not? Two, I would like to discuss the 100% renewable energy goal by 2030. Three, I believe this council, a majority of you, would like to talk about potential, what inclusionary zoning policy would look like. And then four, oil and gas discussions upon the advice of our attorney, meaning talk with Eugene, and we will talk about that on a future occasion. I just wanted you guys to know that those things have been told to the city manager to be placed on the agenda, so, all right? And with that, city manager, yes, Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. Speaking about future agendas, aren't there some things that we must discuss before January, for example, the airport, we said we were going to cover that in December, and I know we have two meetings that have been canceled, one for Thanksgiving and one in the Christmas holidays, so are we going to have enough time to cover the things that we absolutely need to cover, like the airport, what was the other one? There was something that we needed to do.
I think it was the airport issue was the one that held over.
That's the only one?
Correct, and I think there were some questions regarding oil and gas, and that was one of the items that the mayor just mentioned, and so that was the one that Eugene's going to work on.
Okay. Okay.
I will have to talk to the mayor about timing on some of these items, just because of the agendas, but the airport item definitely is one that we have to bring forward.
Okay, I just wanted to remind people of that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, city manager, do you have a report?
No report, mayor, council.
All right, thank you. And then we shall now proceed with the special reports and presentations. I believe we have the Longmont Economic Development Partnership Quarterly Report to be given by Jessica Erickson, my neighbor.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley and council members. I'll start this evening by saying congratulations to you, Mayor Bagley, and to council members Martin and Rodriguez for your new, well, your well-fought and won elections. I look forward to getting to know all of you better in your new roles and working with you on economic development initiatives in the community, and Polly as well, congratulations on your, I'm sorry, Councilmember Christensen, congratulations on your appointment as Mayor Protem. I am here this evening as president of the Longmont Economic Development Partnership to provide our third quarter report. So we focus our work in four core service areas, the Longmont Economic Development Partnership does, and those are advanced Longmont, which is the broad economic development strategy that has been adopted by the city of Longmont, advanced primary industry, advanced local business, and advanced startup community. And so that's how I will report this evening. We'll start with an overall look at our local economy. As part of our advanced Longmont strategy, we track overall economic performance. Within the city of Longmont, there are currently 37,779 total jobs across all sectors, with an unemployment, local unemployment rate of 2.4%. That's in comparison to the same across the state of Colorado, 2.1% in Boulder County, and 4.4% in the US. I will note that these are second quarter projected numbers, the data source that we use lags a quarter in their reporting of economic and labor force data. The 2.4% unemployment rate does mark a slight tick up from the previous quarter, and that's the same in both Boulder County, the US, and the state of Colorado. Across the board, we've seen a very slight tick up, but 2.4% still being full employment by anybody's estimation. Year-over-year, since Q2 of 2016, we've seen net new 684 jobs, which represents 1.6% employment growth year-over-year. We see average annual wages of $61,305, which is a 1.3% growth year-over-year from quarter two of last year. We focus on, we have, for those of you who might not be as familiar with our advanced Longmont strategy, we partner with 12 other organizations across the community to implement a variety of strategies relative to economic development and creating a positive economic climate here in Longmont. And so these are just some of the examples of the milestones from that implementation table that we use to give you an idea of the work that we're doing towards the advanced Longmont strategy. We did, as an organization, add two staff members to support the work of the advanced Longmont strategy, one focused on investor and community relations, and one focused on small business economic development. We also executed in Q3 the very successful Longmont Startup Week 2017. I'll talk about that in a bit more detail later. We hosted a leadership summit for all of the advanced Longmont partner organizations, hoping to better engage, involve, and inform the leadership of those organizations beyond staff, so boards of directors, investors, members, and stakeholders in all of those organizations were invited to participate in this leadership summit. We also hosted our annual real estate showcase, which is an opportunity for us to invite brokers, real estate developers, and investors from across the region to Longmont to highlight all of the economic development opportunities and assets that we have here for them. We also hosted our 18th Annual Community Impact Awards, getting ahead of myself, 18th Annual Community Impact Awards, where we recognized businesses in the community for their philanthropic and sustainability efforts in the previous year. And we also participated in the Metro Denver Economic Development Corporation Site Selection Event, which is an opportunity for us to get together with economic development organizations and representatives from all of the counties and cities across the front range to host site selectors from across the country and really show off the economic development assets and opportunities in the entire region as a region. A big part of our responsibility to the advanced Longmont strategy, as well as our contract with the city of Longmont for economic development services, is to market Longmont for the purposes of economic development across the country. And so this is a map of year-to-date as of the end of the third quarter, where we've been promoting Longmont and economic development opportunities in Longmont across the country. We also do a number of what we call inbound marketing events. These are opportunities to invite people from outside of Longmont to come to Longmont and see what we have to offer, all of the opportunities that we have here, and the resources, the infrastructure development, and everything we've created here in Longmont to support economic development. And that, so that's the list that you see on my left. On my right, you'll see our internal marketing events. So part of our strategy is to ensure that the citizens, business owners, and operators, executives in the community are aware of the advanced Longmont Economic Development Strategy, of economic development in Longmont, and the work that Longmont Economic Development Partnership does to support economic development here. And so those are our opportunities to go out and speak to the community about the work that we're doing and that you're doing towards economic development in the city. Next, I'll talk about, a little bit about a primary industry base and the work that we're doing with primary industries. We define primary industries as those that are exporting goods and services outside of the region, bringing new dollars into the region. So those are our manufacturers, our distributors, our tech companies, those people that are doing work across the country and in many cases, across the globe. So of the projects that we, the Longmont Economic Development Partnership, has worked on in 2017, we've had 563 jobs announced by nine new primary industry employers in our community. We've also worked with two existing companies who have now announced the creation of eight new jobs within the community. We also know of 22 additional jobs that will be announced by projects that we've worked on here over the next quarter. And of the pipeline of projects that we're currently working on, which I'll also add some more detail to on my next slide, but of those projects that we're currently working with, there's potential for an additional 2,094 jobs, should we win all of those projects. The likelihood that we'll win all of those projects is not good, but that's just showing what the pipeline and the opportunity that we have is. When we look at our four targeted primary industries of advanced technology, bioscience, creative arts and culinary, professional services and IT, again, these numbers are lagging a quarter, so this is second quarter 2017 numbers, and we have seen relatively flat employment growth across our targeted primary industries. However, based on our pipeline, we expect that to go up over the course of the remainder of this year, as well as going into 2018. And so when we look at the pipeline of projects that we currently have active, we currently have 49 active primary industry prospects for either relocation, expansion, or new location in the city of Longmont. And you can see that about 33, I think it was, I added 33 of those are new projects that we've started working on in 2017, the remainder being carryover projects from the previous year, or in some cases, previous years. Sometimes we work on an individual project for multiple years. Our lead sources for prospects, so the way that we find out about opportunities for primary industry development, our number-one source for leads has, over the course of the last couple of years, transitioned to become direct inquiry from companies into our organization. I credit that to the work that we've done over the last couple of years to inform the rest of the world that we exist as a resource for economic development in Longmont. Our second primary project lead source is the Metro Denver Economic Development Corporation. We act regionally in a lot of ways in partnership with the Metro Denver Economic Development Corporation, understanding that attracting business investment to the region first and then to our local communities is a more effective way than telling the rest of the world that they should look at Longmont first. The industry clusters that most of our projects are in, we have a significant amount of activity right now in our advanced technology industries. As you saw on the previous slide, we have seen some job losses in the advanced technology industries over the course of the last year, most of those related to mergers and acquisitions within the storage industry. We're starting to see some of that activity come back again now, and so we'll hopefully have some announcements of some job growth in those industries over the coming quarters. We also work with our local businesses. We define our local businesses as those businesses that are serving the local community, circulating dollars throughout the community. So those would be retail, restaurant, service sector businesses. And so we spend a great deal of time meeting with those businesses, understanding what their needs are, supporting their ability to grow and expand here locally within Longmont, either through our grant programs, our partnership with the SBDC, or many of the other resources that we or our partner organizations offer. So year-to-date, as of the end of the third quarter, we had met with and worked with 60 different local businesses, and held eight workshops in partnership with the SBDC, with 149 total attendees, averaging about 18 attendees per class. That's actually an increase over the last couple of years, where we've seen an average attendance of about 15 to 16. I think that has a little bit to do with the different mix of workshops that we've been offering this year. We also manage the partnership contract that the city of Longmont has with the SBDC, and we partner with them to provide those consulting hours that they've committed to here locally. As of the end of the third quarter, they had provided 543 hours of consulting to 132 Longmont businesses. We also manage the small business lending program that is funded by the city of Longmont, Guaranty Bank, and the Colorado Enterprise Fund. So far this year, or through Q3 of this year, we had managed the lending of 1.1, just over $1.1 million to the businesses that you see listed there, resulting in the retention of 95 jobs in those businesses, and 269 new jobs created based on the expansion and the growth that they were able to do as a result of the loans that we provided. We also provide a variety of scholarship and grant, manage a variety of scholarship and grant programs on behalf of the city. We were able to provide $3,000 in John Schallert Destination Boot Camp scholarships to Georgia Boys Bootstrap Brewing and Ivy Rose, three now open, and so far, successful businesses here in Longmont. We've also provided $22,500 in our portion of the retail conversion grant to downtown businesses. The Longmont Downtown Development Authority also has a retail conversion grant, and we match the two with each of these businesses. So each of these businesses received a grant from the DDA, as well as from our organization funded by the city of Longmont. And then finally, we have both a small business improvement grant and a startup grant. These are grants that are available to businesses outside of the DDA, also funded by the city of Longmont, and we've given two of those this year totaling $7,325 to Longmont Velo and Butora. And then the last area that we focus on is on advancement of our startup community, creating an entrepreneurial ecosystem here. And certainly, the big story for us for Q3 of 2017 was the successful execution of Longmont Startup Week. You can see the 2017 numbers of registrants and attendees in comparison to previous two years, so we've seen growth of Longmont Startup Week in terms of attendance and events consistently over the course of the three years that we've had Longmont Startup Week. This was the first year that the Longmont Economic Development Partnership actually managed the execution of Longmont Startup Week, but it was executed for the community, by the community, hundreds of volunteers, dozens of organizations that all came together to make that event a success. And with that, I'll happily answer any questions.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley, and thank you, Jessica, for the quarterly update. I just have to say that I'm very excited with some of the directions you're going with, local business and startups specifically. I'm very excited for our meeting that will be in the next few weeks, so thank you very much.
I'm looking forward to it as well, thank you.
I echo those, I echo those sentiments. You're doing a great job. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
At this time, we're going to go ahead and have a first call, public invited to be heard. If you'd like to speak, and your name's not on the list, let's get your name on the list, or else you're going to have to speak at the end of the meeting. So if somebody would, if you want to speak now, speak up now. So let's go ahead and start with Elizabeth Olson. Is Olson?
I'm Dr. Elizabeth Olson, and I live at 517 Noel Avenue in Longmont, and I mostly just wanted to come up tonight and say how excited I am that we have the council that we have tonight, and for the next two years. And I wanted to just speak to that, one of the things I did over the last four months was canvass at over, you know, hundreds, close to probably 1,000 different homes in Longmont. And one of the things that I did was I visited a lot with the citizens here in our city, and the biggest concern that people had was the possibility that fracking could be moving into our city limits. And that's a real concern for me, because it's actually very close to my neighborhood, and I have a lot of concerns for our health. I have respiratory issues myself. I have respiratory issues myself, and I just am really concerned about our air and water quality. And so my hope is that you all will take this really seriously and that you will work to do everything that you can to delay, 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 and fight the possibility that fracking could come into our city limits. And so I appreciated Mayor Bagley, you saying that it is on the agenda coming up here soon. And I know, you know, when I listened to you at the Longmont Area Democrats, you spoke up about how you're against fracking in our city as well. And I'm excited to see how you all can work together to help keep it out of our city. So that's the main thing I wanted to say, is that there's a lot of people concerned about it, and I hope that you all will be creative and find ways that you can to help protect our city from that. And then the other thing is just that I have a real hope, and I think a lot of people also do, for you all to work hard to really implement the strategies so that we can move Longmont towards 100% renewables, renewable energy, sorry, by 2030. So I'm hoping you'll take that up as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Olsen. Mr. James Kenworthy, the one and only, the one and only.
One and only, thank you very much. James Kenworthy, 107 Caribou Place. I'm so happy to see you all here today, and I mean that sincerely. I was listening to Alan Watts this morning. If I have time, I'll tell you who Alan Watts is. And he mentioned that we are all manifestations of their primordial memory. That's a Zen Buddhist theory, idea of where we all come from. And more scientific story is we are all ancestors of a being in ancestral Africa several million years ago that we call Lucy. And another story is we're all children of God, whichever God anyone believes in. And what these stories have in common is that we're all one big, happy, dysfunctional And what I'm hoping, that you all feel that it's a good time to really cooperate and get along. A little bit of kindness, a lot of respect, that will grease the wheels of, we all have problems every now and then with what other people say and how we feel. Put those aside and work for the betterment of what's going on in the city. Some useful dial- sorry, some useful dialogue without innuendo and double meanings, clear communication, that refers to all of us, you all, these people here in the front row, including me, these attentive people behind me, and all the other people that usually come to city council. We really ought to try to get along and try that for a while and see what happens. It's the citizens that pay the bills, it's the citizens that suffer when things go wrong, and it's the citizens that benefit when things go right. So if we all do that, maybe we can find a path to understanding. And this is the era of the city and council, city and county. We can't expect a lot of coherent or positive messages from the White House. And here in Colorado, we can't expect a lot of cooperation from the governor's office, but we can expect a lot of pressure from those two entities, and we can expect a lot of pressure from the corporations. The corporations are not our friends. We know what's going on with, I don't have to tell you, my time's up?
Sorry, Mr. Kenworthy.
I don't have to tell you what the issues are.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to cut you off.
Right, thank you very much.
All right. God, that stinks, cutting people off. The, Gordon Pedro, our beloved one-time city manager.
Missions to all of the newly seated council members. Mayor and council, I'm Gordon Pedro, 2639 Falcon Drive. I want to address you regarding the Windy Gap Farming Project known as Chimney Hollow. By approving ballot question 2J, the voters have given you an additional financing option to use as this project moves forward. So now, both cash financing and bond financing are available depending on the level of participation you opt to use. I'm here to ask the new city council engaged in a comprehensive review of all data the previous council used to make its decision to participate at the 10,000 acre feet level. As you know, the staff recommended participating at 6,000 acre feet, based on years of analysis of anticipated water needs that build out of the comprehensive plan. You may also recall that the previous city council received information from staff prior to placing question 2J on the ballot, that 8,000 acre feet of storage could be financed by cash with existing approved water rates. I believe you owe it to your great paying residents to carefully review your options for acquiring the appropriate level of storage in Chimney Hollow, prior to making additional commitments to the project. The key part of ballot question 2J reads, "Shall city of Longmont debt be increased in an amount not to exceed $36,300,000 for the purpose of financing water system improvements, including but not limited to the construction of water storage reservoir as part of the Windy Gap Farming Project, in a participat- at participation level not to exceed 10,000 acre feet?" That wording makes it clear that you are now authorized to bond for a little over $36 million for up to 10,000 acre feet of storage in Chimney Hollow. But it does not say you have to spend that much, nor acquire that much storage, if you determine that it's in the best interest of your residents not to. I hope you will at least complete a comprehensive analysis before you plunge forward. I know you have many things to review in the coming months. The mayor just listed several that you're going to have, and they're major. But this one item will impact every resident for years to come. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Pedro. Tasha Power. No? What about Ken Huey? Well, I notice you're from Boulder, thanks for driving up. Roger Lang, Mayor Lang.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley, city council members. My name's Roger Lang, I live at 800 Briarwood Lane in Longmont. First of all, and it's been said before, I want to congratulate the mayor and council members Christensen, Martin, and Rodriguez for the outcome of the election. Welcome to city council. I want to talk to you about similar issues that Gordon Pedro had addressed with you about the water storage bond and ballot question 2J. As you know, the ballot question 2J was approved by the Longmont voters, which authorized the city to use bonds or issue bonds to help fund construction of a water supply reservoir for use by Longmont. The quantity of the water of the authorization was not to exceed 10,000 acre feet of storage, and could be less than 10,000 acre feet with council approval. I don't know if this is well-understood by the general public or us in the room, but the fact is that 10,000 is a number that's not cut in stone, it could be less than that. There was much discussion prior to the vote from the public as to what the appropriate amount of storage should be. City staff recommended 6,000 acre feet. The previous city council chose 10,000 acre feet, but a compromised amount of 8,000 acre feet was also discussed. U.S. city council have the opportunity to decide what you feel is the proper amount of water storage, and how that amount will impact water rates going forward. If you choose six or 8,000 acre feet, the current adopted rate increases will be increased 27% over a three-year period. If you choose 10,000 acre feet, the rate increase will be 32% over a three-year period. All I ask is that you take the emotion out of your decision-making process, and make your decision based on what you feel is in the best interest of our community and the constituents that you represent. Would something less than 10,000 acre feet with no additional water rate increases over those rates currently adopted be in the best interest of the general public? Or would 10,000 acre feet coupled with an additional 5% rate increase be in the best interest of the general public? The choice is yours to make, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness of your decision. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thought you knew me. My name is Strider Benston. 951 Seventeenth Avenue, Longmont. Greetings, Mayor Bagley, city council, and the soon-to-be forthcoming someday other I, there's a lot going on, and I think we have had a period of relief for the last 12 days that a certain personage has been over across the ocean, big water, big water. So we have had a little bit less severe difficulty in this country, although the president yesterday made a great statement to his warm friend, the President Duterte of the Philippines, who has personally bragged about being a murderer, just like our president has personally bragged about being a sexual abuser. We need to keep things in mind. And I, one piece of it, the Dangerous Case of Donald Trump, written by 27 major world-class psychiatrists and mental health experts around the country. And a lot of it, everybody would already know if you pay attention, but one chapter in the middle, "On Seeing What You See and Saying What You Know," by Henry J. Friedman, is very significant. We have just today, the Attorney General of the United States sat before a House committee, and it was questioned to him about why has he directed the FBI to investigate what he calls black identity extremists, which there is no such thing. And he himself, being the spiritual leader of the white identity extremists in this country, like the Ku Klux Klan, et cetera. I find that very interesting and reminiscent of a former leading official, J. Edgar Hoover, who created COINTELPRO, which I have had some experience with, and who personally blackmailed seven presidents of the United States. But I was here last night, we had a city council meeting last night, y'all done real well, so maybe I reckon I don't have to monitor you all the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Benston. All right, Val, could you go ahead and read the consent agenda for us?
Yes. Mayor Bagley, your first item is 8A, Ordinance 201768, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017. This ordinance, public hearing is scheduled for November 28. Item 8B is Ordinance 201769, a bill for an ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the lease for Vance brand municipal airport hangar parcel H46. Public hearing is scheduled for November 28. Item 8C is Ordinance 201770, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of right-of-way on the north 30 feet of the south 200 feet of the east half of Lot 3 Marshall Subdivision, Boulder County, Colorado, and the west 30 feet of the south 200 feet of the east half of Lot 3 Marshall Subdivision, Boulder County, Colorado, generally located north of Ninth Avenue and west of Francis Street. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for November 28. Item 8D is Ordinance 201771, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of a 15-foot drainage easement, a 10-foot sewer easement, and a 15-foot utility easement in the Sullivan subdivision, generally located on Long, Longspeake Avenue, west of Hoover. The public hearing is scheduled for November 28. Item 8E is Ordinance 201772, conditionally approving the partial vacation of a 10-foot wide electric utility easement, being a portion of Jaeger Garden Acres, Annexation Number Three, that's generally located north of 19th Avenue and west of Main Street. This public hearing is also scheduled for November 28. Item 8F is Ordinance 201773, bill for an ordinance approving the amendment to the agreement in furtherance of annexation for the Anderson Annexation to the city of Longmont, Colorado. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for November 28. Item 8G is Longmont Gateway Business Improvement District dissolution. The first item under that is Ordinance 201774, a bill for the ordinance, a bill for an ordinance for the dissolution of the Longmont Gateway Business Improvement District. Public hearing is scheduled for December 19 on that one. The second item under that is Resolution 2017103, that is setting the hearing for the dissolution of the Longmont Gateway Business Improvement District for December 19. Item 8H is Resolution 2017104, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for sidewalk and drainage improvements along the south side of Ninth Avenue between Allen Drive and Hayden Court. Item 8I is Resolution 2017105, finding that the petition for annexation of parcels of land located in Boulder County, state of Colorado, known as the HMS Rogers Road Annexation, generally located between Rogers Road and Nelson Road, and between Hoover Road and Airport Roads substantially complies with the Colorado revised statutes, Section 731-121071. Item 8J is Resolution 2017106, resolution of the Longmont City Council establishing the fee for cash and lieu of water rights transfers. Item 8K is Resolution 2017107, approving the memorandum of agreement, of understanding between the city and the regional transportation district regarding the development of the First and Main Transit Station. Item 8L is Resolution 2017108, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for Compass Community Indicator Dashboard Services. Item 8M is Resolution 2017109, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado for a library grant. And item 8N is Resolution 2017110, approving the city of Longmont 2018 Classification and Pay Plan for city employees. And staff would like to pull items I and K for short presentations.
Councilmember Peck.
I would like to pull item F.
Anyone else want to pull anything? If not, could I have a motion to pass the consent agenda, please? Mayor Protem Christensen.
I move that we pass the consent agenda minus items F, I, and K.
The motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Finley absent. We don't have any ordinances on second reading, so let's just go ahead and move on to those items that were just pulled. Why don't we go ahead and start with F? Do you want to go with I first? Let's go with I. You go with I or F? What do you want to go with, good sir? Mr. Burchett.
Mayor Bagley, if we could go with F, that would be great.
Let's go with F.
Thank you.
I think that's great, fantastic. We shall go with F.
Mayor Bagley, just so people know, item F is the Anderson Annexation.
Thank you.
Mayor Bagley, I don't have a specific presentation.
There we go, great. Councilmember Peck.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I just have a clarification, actually, on this. When we brought up this storage unit a few months ago for covered RV storage, I don't remember if there was anything mentioned in there about a shop on the premises for repairing recreational vehicles, or was that in the first, the first time this was brought up, or was it just storage? Or was it just storage?
So, Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Peck, I know that when the applicants had come in and met with us for a pre-application conference, that was a use that they were contemplating adding to the business.
Okay.
Um, that use itself, as we had determined, was going to be allowed, um, under the current zoning that's on the property, but they would have to go through the site plan process to get that use approved.
Okay.
The request tonight is, uh, looking at the issue of the uncovered storage areas within the center of the facility.
And the reason that I bring that up is because I'm wondering if making part of the storage units uncovered gives them, gives the developer, the owners, more room inside for, uh, this maintenance facility or for the resident? Because I haven't determined why they want to change it from covered to uncovered.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Peck, I won't speak for the applicant. They, they could answer that question for you specifically, if, if that's your concern. But what I would say is that in its current configuration, the way the outdoor storage is being done is that there is currently more storage in the way it is arranged uncovered currently on the property than was shown on the original annexation concept plan. So, my, my ta, my take on it is that the, the arrangement, if it can meet all of the code requirements and not be covered, would potentially give them more area for storage. Um, but we have not seen a final plan from them because they are trying to determine whether or not the council is amenable to allowing uncovered outdoor storage.
And that's where, and that's where I get frustrated because the other, uh, the other number I on here is for annexation of a lo, of 80 acres that, uh, if I understand, just in hearsay, is going to be some high residential property. And I'm just wondering how that's going to work in with a maintenance facility for recreational vehicles on that property. And I, and I, I feel it's council's job to look at the entire area, not just one little project. So not knowing or seeing that plat, I am not going to vote for, uh, uncovered until I know exactly what's going to go in there.
Okay. And is this fir, this is first reading or se, this is only first reading? Okay.
We can, we can let the applicant know.
Okay. That would be great. So knowing that, I move, uh, Item 0217-73.
Technically, you-
Can't we do that?
Well, technically, you can make a motion, but not argue against it. But you've already argued against it and made the motion. So I guess that's permitted. Do we have a second?
Okay, Eugene?
We're good. Any, any, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez, did you want to say something?
I did. Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Sorry, I just got a little thrown off there by the argument against while the motion was made also too. Sorry, anyway. Just for a little background sake, for anybody that doesn't know, I've been seated on planning and zoning for the last two years now. And so this is actually something that has come across while I was seated at planning and zoning, and I can speak a little bit to it. Planning and zoning, as far as our, uh, decision on the, on the project was concerned, and our understanding of the project, showed that the way that the proposed construction of what are considered covered, covered storage, actually shields very, very effectively from any neighbors, anything that would be uncovered storage in the middle of the, the facility. And it, it does not show, as far as the site plan I've seen, uh, which is not a finalized site plan, as, as has been pointed out. Uh, but it does show where the, what you would say the maintenance area is or that, that proposed business, which is not a mechanical, uh, servicer, or at least it was not proposed as mechanical. It was more of like interior electronics and things like that in RVs, as well as a maximum height of storage of 16 feet, which would not be visible from north, south, east, or west because, again, every single one of tho, those directional sides are actually metal-covered buildings. And so from, i, it would appear that, uh, everything is covered if you're not actually inside the facility. So that's why planning and zoning ruled that we did not want to continue to require the similar, uh, plan that, uh, previous planning and zoning from 2005 required. And so that's why we changed our ruling on it. It was because we felt that there, there was no point in providing covered storage for the entire facility to give a, a variable rate structure for people that don't want to necessarily have their RVs covered, uh, specifically. And we also felt that it allowed leeway, if somebody wants to put like a, an, a RV tarp cover or something on that, technically in concept, it would be covered. And so we felt that it wa, it was hard to try to, to make that, that requirement at the same time. And so that's where planning and zoning was coming in. And I, I, that's why I just want to explain the planning and zoning opinion on it. So, thank you.
Do you want the floor, councilmember? No? Okay. If there's no further debate, there's a motion on the floor. Let's vote. Ordinance 2017-73 passes unanimously with Councilmember Finley absent. Let's go ahead and look at Resolution 2017-105, also known as I.
And that would be the HMS Rogers Road Annexation.
Good evening, Mayor Bagley. Members of Council, Don Burchette, Planning and Development Services. Staff asked, uh, to have this pulled so that we could just give you just a quick, uh, overview on this. So the resolution that you're considering tonight, for those of you new to the council, this is a resolution that basically makes a finding by the city council that the requirements for eligibility for annexation of a parcel of ground meets the state statute requirements. City staff has reviewed the requirements of the state statutes, what's listed in your council communication. We believe that those requirements are met, and approving this resolution, uh, would meet all the requirements that we have for our city rules and regulations on annexation. This does not obligate you to annex the property. This only makes a finding that it's eligible for annexation. You will have a first reading on an ordinance for the annexation and an annexation agreement in the concept plan, as well as a second reading and public hearing, where you'll be able to ask questions and get additional information if, if you have any concerns. So again, tonight is only the first resolution, finding that statutory requirements have been met. And that's why we wanted to ask you to hear this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Burchette. Do we have a motion? Council, uh, Mayor Protem Christensen.
Um, Don, if, um, this is not the time to just, there were lots of discussions about the, the high water table, particularly as you get toward Rogers Road and Hoover. So we'll discuss, we'll, have you been reviewing, um, any of the flood mitigation and groundwater mitigation things? Or will you be, will we be talking about that at the next, uh, the next hearing?
Mayor Bagley, Mayor Protem Christensen. I myself have not reviewed those. But I know that we will have staff available at the public hearing that could answer those questions for you. And so we will make sure that those people are here to be able to answer those questions for you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion? Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I motion that, uh, the council approve the limited decision that the HMS annexation meets statutory requirements.
Beautifully said. Do we have a second? Any debate or discussion? Let's vote. The motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Finley absent. Finally, let's go on to Resolution 2017-107, AKA K, Resolution of Longmont City Council approving the memorandum of understanding between the city and the regional transportation district regarding the development of the First and Main Transit Station.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, members of the city council. Welcome new councilmembers Martin and Rodriguez. Uh, my name is David Starnes, Redevelopment Manager with the city. Uh, tonight, I'm here to just present a brief update on the First and Main Transit Station that coincides with the memorandum of understanding that's before you tonight for, for action between RTD and the City of Longmont. So, um, this was presented back in July. But I want to kind of rehash this very quickly, kind of the process to date and where we're at in terms of implementing the transit station with RTD at First and Main. Um, it's been a 13-year process since FastTrax was first adopted back in 2004 for the FastTrax funding. Things that are important to note for the City of Longmont is back in 2012, as we adopted the First and Main Transit and Revitalization Plan. And this is the guiding vision for implementation of the station that included significant public input and community involvement. Through this process, um, back in November of 2015, we presented initial kind of options for this transit station layout based on RT's initial plans. City council directed staff to go another direction, meaning we were looking, um, to do more of a transit-oriented development, higher-intensity development next to our station rather than a service parking lot with a couple bus bays. So that led us to engage the services of a consultant, EPS, to help us evaluate the potential different concepts for how the station could lay out, as well as, um, the funding options in terms of implementing this plan. So back in July, um, this year, we presented the, the design concepts and, and funding options, and we're seeking direction from council. Here's this kind of a rendering of, um, one of the recommended concepts that shows kind of a more intensive development. Again, this is south of First Avenue and west of Main Street with, um, the, uh, bus New Coffin Street extension, um, along New Coffin Street there, and then the future rail platform to the west of First Avenue, with, um, structured parking in the middle, as well as what we call transit-oriented development. And this is development that could include office, residential, or retail. And the initial development program, working with our consultant, is looking at a potential $90 million private sector investment that includes nearly 200 residential units with 45,000 square feet of office and a limited amount of retail space. This kind of rendering or concept kind of shows you how it looks like, um, looking down on it. So you can see the parking garage is in the middle. This is the preferred option that council directed us to, that more of a centrally-located garage, with a New Coffin Street extension extending from First Avenue down to Boston Avenue. And that's where the transit station bus bays would be located, more urban style versus a surface parking lot, as well as, um, on the rail platform along First Avenue. And the area kind of highlighted in yellow or orange are the, the transit-oriented development, um, sites. So in terms of the, in this plan outlines some key next steps. There's a lot of moving parts to this process to implement this plan. And one of the key steps from the, from the, um, the First and Main Plan back in July was an execution of a memorandum of understanding, which is what is before you tonight, between the city and RTD, that kind of outlines the next steps and the process to get this, um, um, transit station being implemented. Other next steps that we will be working on shortly is the, is what's called the Infrastructure Master Plan, and this will be led by RTD. And this is something that they, um, kind of require at their stationary that really gets into the detailed costing and design layout of the transit station in terms of all the utilities, the infrastructure, the easements, really digging in to see how we're going to build this transit station with all the infrastructure that's required. And also it should include the financing options in terms of the public and, um, sector partners, which is the city and RTD, and potentially the private sector. And we're looking to begin this in, uh, 2018. Uh, the second option that we'll be moving concurrently with this is, based on council direction, we are evaluating kind of the funding options for the city portion of implementing the station plan. As you may be aware, 17 million has been allocated to the city, but that doesn't cover the full cost of doing this station plan. The full cost of the station plan is in the range of 22 million. So it's about four and a half to five and a half million dollar funding gap from the city's perspective to implement the transit-oriented development, um, plan. So we'll be looking at that, and I expect we'll be coming back to council with some discussion and some options at some point, um, early next year. The other piece, um, too, as part of this MOU, is, is intergovernmental agreements. So as part of the MOU, one of the things that RTD is requiring is, as part of the reimbursement or payment process from the 17 million, we'll have to have separate intergovernmental agreements with RTD. Um, and this could include, this reimbursement could include what the actual design and construction process looks like and the allocation of costs between the city and the RTD between transit-eligible and non-transit-eligible costs. Um, another piece of this, obviously, is land acquisition. We've, we've done outreach on, on two occasions with each of the property owners down at the station area. Um, they've been in, aware of this process since, you know, 2011, 2012, when the First, First and Main Plan was adopted. So we, we, our goal is to work closely with them in terms of potential land acquisition, assembly, and then re, um, then assistance with any type of relocation. So it's an ongoing process, but I just want to make you aware that we have done, our consultant has done outreach to the owners down there. We first started the First and Main Plan concept back in, um, 20, early 2017. And then at the conclusion of this report in 2017 in July, they, again, went back to the, down to the property owners and met with them and provided reports of, of what was completed. So with this, there's several parallel activities that are impacting the viability of this station plan. One is, as you may be aware, the station is in the floodplain, in terms of the new, um, floodplain. So we're working with Public Works in terms of the Resilient St. Brain Project, which will remove ultimately this property, as well as a lot of the First and Main area from the floodplain. But, um, in terms of doing the vertical, um, part of the TOD, that's something that will have to be addressed before we can, um, move to the vertical. The other piece is the Colorado 119 BR study, BRT study, which is underway and is slated to be completed by end of 2018. This BRT study will ultimately inform some of the design, as well as the layout of the station in terms of the accommodation of bus rapid transit. So it's an important piece as well. And then just quickly, I just want to kind of highlight in the MOU, there's a couple major, you know, main components. One is really this MOU acknowledges both the city and the RTD's desire to transform this area into a vibrant mixed-use and transit hub. It's really important, um, in terms of, you know, working closely with RTD in terms of the, the, the vision that the community has mentioned to us about how they want to see this area developed in terms of being a transit hub. It also recognizes several efforts that will inform how this development will occur. Two have been completed. One is the First and Main Plan from first, 2012. The second is the TOD Strategies Report from this, July of this year. But there's also, as I mentioned, the BRT study and then the floodplain mitigation efforts will ultimately impact how the station will look like. And then lastly, um, several other components of this MOU include the planning and plenary engineering with RTD. This is the Infrastructure Master Plan that I had mentioned earlier. Also, working closely with RTD to outline what the design and then construction of the transit station will look like. Basically, what are the roles and responsibilities of each of these parties in terms of who owns it, who maintains it, and who builds it? This, uh, MOU does acknowledge the 17 million RTD funding that can be used to reimburse the city for eligible transit costs, including land acquisition, transit infrastructure, parking, relocation assistance by impacted property owners. These are all eligible costs. And then also the, that multiple intergovernmental agreements will be required as this process moves forward. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Starnes. Do we have any que, uh, Councilmember Martin?
Uh, yes, could you go back to the artist visualization, second or third slide? Yeah. I have several questions about, um, the visualization. First of all, uh, off, off to the right, you have some trains and tracks that seem to come to, uh, a stop right there. How does that work? Where do the trains go?
Sure. So, um, right now, based on the north, and again, this is based on the alignment of the Northwest Rail. The Northwest Rail comes in from the west up diagonal, and it comes in under, basically, for, you know, paralleling, mouse here? Paralleling, um, um, railroad tracks. And it's going to come in here and then stop basically right at Coffin Street. And so the, the, the platform will be to the west of Coffin Street, such that Coffin Street will be a north-south connector, and that's where the BRT will be going, running north-south. And so basically, as I understand with RTD, it's going to be a parallel track, a double track, actually, coming in into, um, along, parallel to- track actually coming in into, parallel to First Avenue, parallel to the existing BNSF Railway, and it comes to a stop right there at Coffin Street. Does that make sense?
Not entirely.
It's end-of-line station.
It's the end-of-the-line station. So do the trains need to turn around, or how does that work?
Yeah, I'll probably have Phil come down and talk about that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Phil Greenwald, Transportation Planner with the city. What you're seeing here is really the tail lines coming off of the mainline track. So the freight will still come through, just as it does today, and then two tracks will come off, what we call tail tracks, and end right before Kaufman. The train will just basically turn around, it won't have to turn around, the conductor will just go to the other end of the train and then leave from that platform, from that station area from there. But we've got two tracks, so you can have two trains, one coming and one leaving the station pretty much at the same time. So there is that.
I see. And the other, the second question I have is, since these trains will not, these are the trains that are now arriving in 2040, is that right?
Councilmember, 2040-plus, yes.
Yes. I was, I was being optimistic. I think it's 2044, is that the correct number?
We use 2042, but that's not been completely, RTD has not confirmed that as exact date.
Yeah, okay. So what does this area look like when these tail tracks, is that the right word? Yeah, when they're not there? Are we going to have a gap of undeveloped property there or fenced off?
Mayor Begley and Councilmember Martin. Basically, this will not be developed. We are saving it for the future train. We could put, there could be plaza, there could be other things there that are more temporary in nature, but we wouldn't put, there would be no construction of any of the TOD pieces of this on those places where we know the tracks are coming.
Okay. And finally, what provision is there in this for managing mixed-use transit? I think that's the wrong term, but I'm talking about things like people biking to the station and then getting on a rapid transit service. I don't see any places where you would be able to store your bikes.
Councilmember, that's a great question. This isn't really a concept plan, but it really is meant for the Kaufman Street that you see the buses running on to also facilitate bicycle travel down to the St. Brain Greenway as well as coming north on Kaufman into, into the downtown. And we just had a great enhanced multi-use corridor meeting at 5:00. Unfortunately, it was really bad timing for all of you, so we apologize for that. But 5:00 to 6:30 this evening, we had a great turnout. 50 folks came, and we talked about Kaufman Corridor and how the buses, bikes, pedestrians, and vehicles interact in this corridor, just to the north basically, but it would continue down. And we really do want to facilitate that connection that goes down to the St. Brain Greenway to the south of here, and that's the direction we're kind of looking in this visual.
So can I summarize that as, as that my concern is being addressed, but this visualization doesn't include it?
Exactly, correct.
Okay, that's good. All right, thank you very much.
I've got a quick question for you, Phil. My question is, so my understanding is we are not going to build a transit station until we have more finality on FastTrax, correct?
Mayor Begley, that's not exactly correct. What we're really trying to do is, and here's another plug, tomorrow evening at the museum, 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock is the State Highway 119 Bus Rapid Transit first outreach effort, you know, first public outreach effort, and they'll be talking about how BRT is coming into this corridor. And so we are facilitating this transit facility first for BRT and then further down the road, further down the track for FastTrax.
And my only, I guess my overriding question is, I know that we've done, I just, really what it comes down to is, have we done a business plan or feasibility study regarding the project just to make sure that we don't have a, I mean, I just don't want to see a big building that sits empty because the train's not coming and nobody rides BRT or not enough. I just want to make sure that what we're building, have we done the appropriate studies to make sure that's what we need, that's what we're going to do? I don't want a bridge to nowhere in the middle of downtown Longmont.
I'll let David address how our consultant really looked at that marketing piece.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Starnes?
Mayor, Begley, councilmembers. Yes, so the First and Main TOD Strategy Report did have a financial analysis that outlined essentially with the city's $17 million investment and the potential for transit-oriented development, how that would look like in terms of potential catalyst and benefit to the city in terms of uses that meet the market demand. Our consultant originally looked at residential and office as being the two primary drivers. And again, this might be able to address to, with the current market is for multifamily, but also with LEDP in terms of looking for additional office space. One of the things that we've been hearing is we don't have a lot of high-quality office space in Longmont, and this could be a great place to locate those types of services with next to a transit station. And so the financial analysis that was part of the TOD report looked at basically how much development value could be attracted to this project based on projected rents and then land that the city could play a role in facilitating a public-private partnership. And so that's kind of mapped out there. Obviously, you know, my opinion in terms of, you know, is transit bringing the development or, you know, is the development bringing the transit or both? And it's like, to me, and to me, go ahead.
No, I just, really, my question is, are we going to have an empty transit station?
Yeah.
That's what I don't want.
No.
And as long as you've done the homework and you're saying staff knows that it's not going to be empty.
Yeah, that's part of the, with Phil and the BRT study and the FastTrack study as well.
Thank you.
If I can jump, this is designed to be a multimodal facility that is focused on bus, folks driving in that take the bus to Denver and other locations, people biking in and taking the bus, and then at the end, it's rail. So it is encompassing the broader, all concepts of transportation and bringing folks in. If you look today at Roosevelt, there are a lot of folks that park behind the Roosevelt Building between the pavilion and constantly moving out. This is really taking that transit center and put it in this location, combined with the fact of what you look at and other things occurring in the area, there's going to be other multifamily development in that, which will lead to, I think, more transit options.
Okay.
Density creates the need for more transit.
All right, thank you. If you hit your button, you may.
Thank you, Mayor Begley. One thing that wasn't mentioned was that Harold alluded to, but this also will serve our local buses. So even if we don't get BRT, you know, within the next couple of years, which we think we will in the next few years, but even if that doesn't happen, we still have a high demand for local bus service and a really a facility where people can change buses, get on the regional buses. This location's also, of course, better to connect to our Greenway for pedestrian access, et cetera. So it's truly a multimodal facility. I would also just mention that, as the council knows, we've been working with RTD for a more limited peak rail service that could come sooner than 2042 because it would be far cheaper. And so those plans are developing, and the 36 MCC Mayors and Commissioners Coalition just selected a final option to send to RTD for full-blown analysis for that peak rail service.
Full-blown analysis?
Full-blown analysis, a limited service, yes.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protem Christiansen?
Since we're talking about that area, could we get an update on how the former Turkey plant is doing? Because that would be the obvious pile of people we need to take the transportation.
Councilmember Christian, Mayor, David Starnes, Redevelopment. So yes, in terms of the South Main Station, all the approvals are done. The developer is planning to start construction in December, so financing is in place, everything, as I understand, is going. And there's a, there's a construction trailer out there right now. And so everything that I've heard to date so far is, we're on, we're moving along.
So all the development approvals are there. They still have to come to us and provide the financing plan and that information for us to look at. And I think they set a meeting for Thursday for us to go over some of the additional pieces, so, yes.
So just before I call on Councilmember Martin, just in case there's any question, just as the chair, I'm trying to follow Robert's rules, which basically says that everybody gets a turn. So the only reason I didn't call on you is because Mayor Protem hadn't gotten the turn. So now, nobody else? Councilmember Martin?
Yes, I heard the phrase just then, "high demand for local buses." And I've been spending a lot of time out on the streets recently canvassing, waving signs, things like that, and I've seen a lot of buses go by, and I've never seen one that had 10 riders on it. So I'd like to ask, on what basis is the demand for a local bus service formed?
Mayor Begley, Councilmember Martin, my comment was a demand for local bus facilities. So right now, at the Eighth and Kaufman site, you have a lot of crowding, you don't have adequate lane space for the buses to park, they stack up and sometimes turn the corner. So my comment was there's a demand for bus facilities.
Based on that, has anybody considered the idea that you could use smaller buses? They would not, they wouldn't take up as much space, they could be electric, they wouldn't stack up as much, and they would be more agile in terms of getting out of the side lanes and into the traffic lanes so that they would not cause as much traffic congestion. It seems to me that that's something that we could get RTD to mollify us with because they have taken such a, such a long time in delivering our rail service. Can you give an estimate as to what we would do to look into something like that?
Mayor Begley and Councilmember Martin, we would have to check with RTD on that. And some of the history on that is that we used to have smaller local buses in town called the Longmonster, and they were smaller, shorter vans, but they really didn't work well in snow or in hot weather. So RTD was, we were pretty excited, and RTD was very excited to replace those buses with the shorter version of the city bus that you see out there today, which has the two, the front door and the back door. So there was, there's some history in there, and we can certainly talk about that offline as well, but we would have to talk with RTD to make those changes. It's about their fleet, and it really goes down to maintenance of a fleet system. But I think there has been a lot of effort to convert some of those to electric vehicles over time, and there's some positive things that are leading that way, but it is going to take some time, and it does take that fleet conversion.
And one thing I'm going to do is, I'm going to try over the next couple of years, is keep us on, just keep us focused on the resolution, then we can talk about other things like that. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Begley. To me, the wave of the future will be TOD. I do love TOD. I've seen it all over the nation. I really like the installation in Inglewood, I believe. I believe it's the Inglewood Development, and it's amazing. I think that's really the way we should go as Longmont, but I am very hesitant because of all of the IGAs and moving pieces that will be necessary to really get this thing off the ground and the way it needs to be developed. But at the same time, this is, you know, obviously a very initial piece, talking about just MOU, the memorandum of understanding and whatnot. And so I will be in favor of this piece of it, but at the same time, this is going to take a lot of conversations, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. And so this is one of the things that I wanted to do. So my question is, we don't have a motion yet, but is there anyone that would be against this motion? Then let's have a motion, please. Sorry, Councilmember Martin?
Yes, I move this.
2017-107.
Thank you. 2017-107.
Let's vote.
The motion or the resolution passes unanimously with Councilmember Finley absent. Thank you. All right, with that, let's go ahead and move on to general business. Specifically, amendments to the Land Development Code to update childcare facilities' uses to be consistent with state regulations. Our resident ninja.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'm Brian Schumacher with City Planning and Development Services. Good evening. This is a request for council to amend the Land Development Code to include a use category for residential childcare facilities to be consistent with state licensing requirements. As noted in your communication, residential childcare facilities are licensed by the state of Colorado and provide 24-hour group living and treatment for children. A company is looking at locating in Longmont and is proposing a residential childcare facility here. They currently have facilities or similar facilities in four other states, Utah, Arizona, Idaho, and North Carolina. This would be a 24-hour residential care facility for teenage boys with a history of substance abuse. Participation in the program would be voluntary, as arranged through either the child's parents or their caregiver. Average stay in this type of program would be about three to six months, and the program would include individual and group therapy as well as academic school-based curriculum approved by the state of Colorado. The program is structured, and the children are never left unsupervised, and the staff would include licensed counselors as well as teachers as part of the program. So when the applicant first came to us, we looked at the, our Land Development Code, and our code currently does not have a definition or use category that accurately describes or fits this type of childcare license. And the group living and childcare definitions that we have in the code, we recognize that they need to be updated to be consistent with state licensing requirements. Obviously, that's changed over time. As mentioned in the communication, the last time we had a comprehensive update to our Land Development Code was 2001, so it's been a number of years, and that needs to be updated. That said, we are currently working on an update to the Land Development Code to be consistent with and implement the envisioned Longmont Plan that council adopted last year. And updating our definitions and use categories are part of that update process as well. That said, this company is ready to move forward with their residential childcare facility license to the state, and they are requesting that council allow an amendment to the code in advance of the larger code update being completed this spring. So with that, the proposed change that we would suggest as part of this amendment, if council is in agreement, would to be proposed, this type of facility in the Business Light Industrial Zoning District until the larger code update is completed. And this would be consistent with what we've had discussions on as part of our overall code update. If you have any questions, I'm happy to respond. If council's okay with proceeding with this amendment, staff will bring back an ordinance for your consideration. We don't anticipate this taking much in terms of staff involvement or time to process this amendment. And I just wanted to mention that Dr. Ken Huey, who would be the director of this facility, is here in the audience, if you have any questions for him as well.
So city staff is asking, or they're recommending, that we direct them to introduce an ordinance to amend the code to add the residential childcare facilities definition and use category. Is there a motion? Councilmember Peck? Sure, absolutely.
First, just out of curiosity, has this organization or have they purchased the land already for this facility?
They are looking at a specific location where they would take over a potential existing lease on a property that is Zone BLI. It's in kind of, it's in a commercial area with some, there's some surrounding multifamily use as well. It's in the southwest part of town. It was previously used by two different daycare centers, but this is a different type of use. It doesn't specifically fit our use classification, but they do have a specific location in mind.
Okay, thanks. In that case, I move number 11A, an amendment to the Land Development Code to update childcare facility uses to be consistent with state regulations.
I'll second that. You have the floor, Councilmember Peck. Do you want to make any comments or argument on behalf of your motion?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Or is there anyone with an opposing point of view? The motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Finley absent.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and move on to the second item on our general business list, two thousand seventeen City of Longmont Water Efficiency Master Plan Update, Resolution two thousand seventeen, one hundred and eleven. Mr. Hewson?
Thank you, Mayor and members of council, Ken Hewson, Water Resources Manager with the Public Works and Natural Resources Department. And tonight, I'd like to present you with the two thousand seventeen Water Efficiency In the audience tonight, I'd like to all introduce some of the real workers who worked on this report. Nelson Tipton, our city's water resources analyst, and Dale Ruttermaker, our director, helped us with this. In addition, Holly Link with CH2M Hill Engineers, and Peter Mayer with Water DM Management did a lot of the heavy lifting on getting this update put together. Tonight, we'd like to present you the reasons for the actual update, why we're doing it this time. Give you a little bit of the history of the Water Efficiency Master Plan. And over time, you'll probably see or hear us talk about both Water Conservation Master Plan and Water Efficiency Master Plan. It's really the same thing, but we're kind of, in the past, we would have called it the Water Conservation Master Plan, but the state of Colorado has developed a little bit new terminology, and we're trying to be consistent because by state law, we have to, we have to follow their guidelines. So, as we go through it, we'll call it the Water Efficiency Master Plan. It's the same thing. We'd like to give you a quick overview of the two thousand and eight Water Conservation Master Plan, which is our current working document that we use for our water conservation efforts in Longmont, and then an overview of this two thousand seventeen update to that plan. Explain the differences between the plan update, the two thousand and eight plan, and the current plan, and then answer any questions, if there are any, in that. The real reason, timing-wise, we're looking at this update right now is that the state of Colorado has a state statute, thirty-seven sixty-one twenty-six, which requires a scheduled update of all water efficiency master plans. So, we were due for that update. We actually had completed a data update back in two thousand thirteen, but there were some certain criteria that the state wanted as far as data to go into their plan, so we did that. The best thing about doing this, the state requires it every seven years, the best thing about doing this is it gives an opportunity for the citizens to have input into their water conservation master plan, and that's really a large part of this updating process. It allows us to reevaluate the effectiveness of the Water Efficiency Master Plan and the community's level of participation in the different programs. It provides that data reporting to the state, and the state of Colorado really uses that data reporting format to look at statewide water conservation efforts, statewide water planning, and really helping guide communities towards better utilizing our state's water resources. And then, finally, our community has really expressed a continuing interest in our water conservation master planning efforts. So, a little bit about the history of our water plans. Our first formal water plan was, Water Conservation Master Plan was done in nineteen ninety-six, which really got Longmont going along the path for water conservation efforts, but it was more based upon voluntary programs and didn't have a lot of planned elements in it. And so, in two thousand and four, the city of Longmont did a water, a raw water master plan update, looking at our water supply and future water supplies for the city of Longmont. As part of that, with Water Board and City Council, we developed what we call the city's Guiding Water Principles. And those Guiding Water Principles have really helped lead us over the last fifteen years towards developing a robust water supply, but also looking at many of the programs we do. One of those Guiding Water Principles was water conservation, wise stewardship of our water. And as part of that, the city of Longmont set a goal of having ten percent of our future water supply met by water conservation. We do, we believe then, and we do believe now, that that's possible to do, and that we will meet that goal. So, a few years after that, in two thousand and eight, both as, again, a state requirement for how water conservation master plans are done, and also to make sure that we were, we would be able to meet that ten percent goal, the city did a major update to its water efficiency master planning efforts and came up with specific programs well beyond what we had done before. And so, this update is really just looking at that and seeing where we're going. At this point, I would like to point out that part of our strategy for our water conservation efforts are to utilize some private company that does a lot of water conservation efforts around the Front Range of Colorado. It's called Center for Resource Conservation. That firm really started out as just being able to help communities do water conservation efforts, especially things such as outside irrigation audits, those, the type of things that maybe many of the communities wouldn't have the expertise in doing. They currently do twenty-five, they do water conservation efforts for twenty-five different Front Range entities, municipalities and water departments. And of the twenty-five, they closely monitor how their water conservation master plans go, and they've informed us that Longmont's is the number one water conservation master plan, which I'm proud of, not because of anything really even that the staff is doing, but because of the citizens of Longmont. How they're basing that is on the effectiveness of the programs and basically market penetration. Essentially, Longmont citizens, they sign up for and they participate in most of these programs. They sign up much faster, and they participate at a higher level than other communities. So, I think that's a testament to how our plan has gone over the years and where we're going with it. Real quickly, what I wanted to do was give you a quick overview of the two thousand and eight plan. First, I'd like to just go quickly through a list of what is in our water conservation plan right now, so we can ground ourselves. And most, and secondly, especially for the citizens who might be watching the council meeting, they know what programs are out there, and we certainly would encourage them to participate in these programs. But our current plan has toilet rebates, washing machine rebates, dishwashing rebates, rain sensor and ET controllers rebates. We do inside water audits, both commercially and residentially. We do outside irrigation audits for all classes in commercial, residential, and HOAs, especially HOAs, one of our more successful ones. We do pre-rinse spray valves for restaurants. We do AMR installs, automatic meter reading. We do educational outreach and training programs, a very robust program there. We have a block rate structure in our rates, which encourages water conservation. We have soil amendment rebates as a requirement for all new development. Before you can get a certificate of occupancy, you have to do soil amendment. We have a water waste hotline, and we have a robust codes encouraging water and prohibiting waste of water. We have a active raw water conversion program where we convert larger areas that have your treated water irrigation to raw water irrigation where it's possible. And then finally, we have a very robust municipal water reuse for affluent coming out of our wastewater treatment plant. The outcome of those efforts, our prior efforts from both passive and active water efficiency efforts, we have a projected savings currently of about two thousand four hundred acre feet per year, which is really, really good and close to, or a ten percent savings is between thirty-five hundred to thirty-seven hundred acre feet, so we're well on our way to that ten percent goal.
That's twenty-four hundred per year?
Per year, yes. So then, what I'd like to do is kind of explain where we are with the two thousand seventeen water update. First, I'd like to kind of outline what we did for public input into this program. We started the update in two thousand sixteen with just data evaluation. One of the requirements with the state is a fairly robust data on water use and where it's used and how it's used. And then, in two thousand seventeen, this year, once that was together and once we had looked at some of the programs and looked at which ones were effective and which ones weren't, we, our consultants came up with the draft plan. That was done early this year, and then we went into a very robust public input process. It started in February with a Water Board public presentation and opportunity for the public to have input. In March, we focused on the big projects open house. You may recall, every year we have, or in the past, every year we've had a big, what we call a big projects presentation in the mall here, where a lot of the big projects for the city are put up in poster boards, and we invite the public in, and we have a fairly good representation at that. And then in April, we did an actual official posting and release of the plan to the public, including an article in the Times Call inviting public input. In May, we went to the Board of Environmental Affairs for public meeting input there, and all of that input ended in June with the closing of the formal public input process. Spent the summer taking that input and revising the master plan. Then in September, this last September, we did our final presentation to Water Board with public input at that time, and that is where we are now with the plan that we have before you today. Also, concurrent with the initial data entry in two thousand sixteen, we worked with the city's sustainability plan. You may recall, City Council adopted the city's sustainability plan late in two thousand sixteen. Part of sustainability is water conservation, and so, the efforts here and the efforts in that plan were dovetailed together. So, I'd like to give you a quick overview of some of the differences in the plan because I think this is important to make sure people understand what we've changed and why we've made those changes. Essentially, we realized that we've done, had real good success in indoor efficiency, but really where a lot of our savings are, and especially for Longmont, we need the outdoor water efficiency. So, this plan will start to focus more on the outdoor, and get, you can get, there's more opportunity for water conservation there, and also more, it helps our water rights picture better. The second thing we've done is the high-efficiency clothes washer, high-efficiency dishwasher, and automatic meter reading programs are being phased out. Couple of reasons for that. One is you can't buy anything but a clothes washer, a high-efficiency clothes washer, a high-efficiency dishwasher. When you think of the toilet rebates and some of those programs, those are what I would call just kind of like discretionary replacements. I mean, we, everybody would like a new toilet, but quite honestly, a toilet, if you replace the internal parts of it, can last there for decades and decades and decades. Dishwashers and clothes washers, they wear out. I'm sure everybody's experienced that. And so, there really isn't a big bang for our buck in following that. Automatic meter reading, the original intent for having that as part of the program was because there are times when that information can be useful for water users, but the city of Longmont has since, since the two thousand and eight plan, is now going to AMRs. We replace our meters about once every ten years or so, just because of age and wearing out, and so we have now decided that all our new installs will be AMR capable. So, there isn't a need to have that as a program. It's actually part of our CIP and is occurring as, on all new installs. We have added what's called a stealth toilet technology to the toilet rebate program, and that's actually an ultra-low. It's about a point eight gallon, which is much less than our, the original ones were one point six, which included some one point twos, what were then called ultra-low, but the stealth is the latest technology. So, we're adding that as an additional one. We also are looking to add additional focus on smart controller technology. I think that's really an area where that's going to grow in the near future, and there is, we have experienced, some of the public input we got was that they would like to see some smart controller technology added in. And then finally, as both for our own use and for state reporting, we'll have additional water data use reporting. So, really, we're really continuing to focus on a highly effective water efficiency master plan as part of this. So, there weren't, you know, I kind of gone through the list earlier of all the programs that are out there, so we don't have a lot of changes, which I wouldn't expect, but we did want to make sure we highlighted those few changes that we did. Finally, we'd like to, I'd open it up to questions if there are any, and if not, I'd like to highlight, Water Board did review this in September, and their recommendation was to accept the Water Efficiency Master Plan as written and pass the resolution. The resolution is necessary for us to then have a formally adopted plan that we can submit to the state. After we adopt it, then the state will look at it. To be honest, everything in here meets the requirements, so we shouldn't have any problems with that, but they still have to take a final look at that, so.
All right. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I noticed in the presentation, there was a picture of a zero-scape garden, but I did not hear you talking about anything about zero-scaping, including incentives for residents. Can you tell me if there's anything about zero-scaping in the plan?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Martin, thank you for that question. That's, that's a really good subject. There's a couple of things I, the picture is of our actual zero-scape garden wall down, it's down at our rec center. We have a, I'll call it a smaller zero-scape demonstration garden. We actually partner with the Northern Colorado Water Conservancy District. Their headquarters are in Berthoud, which is, you know, only ten miles or so up the road. They have an absolutely incredible zero-scape garden, far more than I can even understand. You know, I, there's a lot of technology there. And so, we actually encourage our residents, it's actually open to anybody who wants to go look at it. Even on the weekend, you can drive in, park in their parking lot, and then walk through. It's a wonderful afternoon to just go up and look at all that. So, we encourage people to look at that zero-scape garden. So, that's kind of the first step, is just understanding. We find that zero-scaping is much more effective if you go out and you look at a zero-scape garden, and for me, it's, it's one thing to see something in a nursery, it's another to actually see it out, you know, in a field. And then the city of Longmont has a very robust program that, again, is one of them that the CRC that the CRC has said, you know, we have an amazing response from our citizens. I can't say how great our citizens are. We have a program that's called the Garden in a Box, and really, the garden in the box are, is a pre-programmed, which for me, that'd be good, because I'm not a, I'm not able to, you know, figure all that out as well, make it look good. They're actually pre-programmed zero-scape plants. It's not just one plant, it's a array of plants. You go in, you tell them, they've got ones that are specifically designed for the, you know, the little narrow strips of some detached sidewalks have a little, like a four-foot strip. They have a specific garden just for that, and they have a specific garden if you want a small corner of your lot, bigger ones. Those garden in the boxes are subsidized through our water conservation program. They're really not very expensive, they're usually $100 or less for the entire package of all the plants you get. The cost savings are attributable, for one thing, that it's done through the Center for Research Conservation, so they're buying, they literally are buying semi-loads of these plants well ahead of time for all 25 cities, and we're able to realize that cost benefit for that. And so that's probably absolutely for zero-scaping. If you really want to save water on your, money on your water bill, you start zero-scaping. Initially, for the first couple of years, you have to establish it, so that, you know, you don't save a lot of water the first couple of years, but after that, most of the plants are very water efficient. Some take a little bit of water, some take none. But yeah, that's a, that's a really great program for our citizens, and it's, we actually sell out every, almost every year. It's a really popular program for our citizens.
Mayor Protem Christiansen.
I want to thank you for introducing the term stealth toilet technology. That's really...
Been using that for years.
It's a new way. Thank you. And it is interesting about the garden in a box, I've heard of that. So people would go to Public Works to get that?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmember Christiansen, yes, we actually go through, you can go through our website, but it's actually, the easiest way is to go to just Google Center for Research Conservation.
Oh, okay.
Their headquarter out of Boulder. They have the signup sheet on their website. Alls you have to do is go in and sign up right on their website. It has pictures, it has all the information right there for people.
Yeah, that's what I've done with my little hell strip in the front, and I water it maybe twice a year, so it works very well. If there are no other questions, I'll move that we, yeah, I'll move that we, that we pass R. 2017-111.
Senator. Councilmember Peck, I noticed that you had a question. Did you, it was answered? Okay. Is there anyone here not in favor of this motion? The motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Peck, and I guess Ward 1 vacant. Ward 1? What did I say?
You said Councilmember Peck.
No, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ward 1. Not meaning, as in like, I counted, I'm like, wait a second, who are we missing? And it dawned on me, oh, wait, yeah, Bonnie's not, Councilmember Finley's not here, and Ward 1. I apologize. No, Councilmember Peck, you obviously are present. And then, City Manager Dominguez, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I want to make sure we answer the question that was asked. I think the question by Councilmember Martin was, do we provide any incentives for zero-scaping? And I, can we?
And, yes, and we do. We fund the garden in the box.
But beyond that, we don't, like a toilet or something, we don't provide incentives for specific, beyond the garden in the box. I wanted to make sure that was clear.
There you go. Yeah, there, all right. Yes, so I understood properly, I think, that the, there is price support for the garden in the box, so that it's more inexpensive than it could be, but there are not direct rebates or anything like that. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
All right. All right. My goal tonight was nine o'clock, we're zipping along here. All right, let's go on to final call, Public Invited to Be Heard. We are boring the audience to death. Mr. Steven Zabo, come on down. Our neighbor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Steve Zabo, 8449 North 79th Street, Longmont, Colorado, USA Earth, just in case. But anyway, that's really something, stealth toilet technology. We never heard of that last year. That just brings up a point, how fast our technology is moving, okay? So I just want to keep you thinking about this when you talk about fast tracks, okay? 2044, will trains still be the method of transportation? Today, on the news, they just talked about Hyperloop being tested at DIA, half a mile, which goes over 200 miles an hour. So it's just, keep that in your mind when you're thinking about fast tracks, okay? In 1904, during the Macy's Day Parade, there was all horse and buggies. 13 years later, there was none, it was all cars. That's only in 13 years. Since then, you know how fast technology is moving, right? Just a comment, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And that will conclude our Public Invited to Be Heard. Let's move on to our final mayor and council comments. This is the time when the new members can say whatever they want. Anyone? Of course. Councilmember Rodriguez.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I just have to say, as this is the first regular session for this city council, it's my pleasure to serve with you all, and I look forward to a very productive and hopefully a very serviceable few years for the residents of Longmont. But thank you so much all for putting yourselves out there and being willing to serve also. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I didn't do it right, but that's okay.
That's okay, it's all good.
Yeah. I was actually going to say, I'd like to thank the staff who managed to get this new system in and in working order, and I think we're doing pretty well with it, all things considered. So, yeah, it hasn't been as hard as I thought it was going to be. That's all.
Mayor Protem Christiansen.
I just want to thank all my fellow council members. I thought this was a remarkably cordial atmosphere, and I welcome the two new members and look forward to getting a third one. And I really appreciate what Councilwoman Bagley said about the agenda items that we're going to be discussing. I'm looking forward to having a very productive discussion about some of those things that we've needed to discuss for a long time, so thank you.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Following up on what Councilwoman Christiansen said, when do we have to start the increase in water rates for moning, for chimney hollow? Is there a deadline for that?
We would need to bring that in December.
Okay, okay, great, thanks. That's it, that's all I've got?
Right. And I just want to say, this isn't political speak, I actually am really excited to serve with all of you. Period, full stop. And looking forward to the next couple of months, the next couple of years, and doing some great things for our city. So with that, first meeting adjourned. Actually, no, sorry, I take it back. Any remarks, Carol?
No comments, Mayor and Council.
Eugene, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, we are adjourned.